Good evening and welcome to the Scarborough zoning Board of Appeals, September 10th, 2014. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Leroy Crockett? Art Dillon?
Here.
Was there no Leroy Crockett? Okay. Rick Loizell? Martin Marcisso?
Yeah.
Jim Stark?
Here.
Michael Richard? And Tom Stanhope?
Here.
And this evening, Mr. Marcisso and Mr. Stanhope, you'll both be voting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take just a moment to welcome Karen Patterson as our new secretary, and thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
We'll start off this evening, we've had a couple of appeals tables, so we'll start this evening with Appeal Number 2532. This is a miscellaneous appeal, actually, this has been changed from a miscellaneous appeal to a special exceptions appeal, based on some information that the planning department has come up with. Let's see, I assume, okay, this is, this is the Flaherty's, this is James Flaherty, is requesting an expansion of an existing non-conforming use to include hosting special events in an R2 zone. Do we have someone here from the Flahertys to pick names? Would you please take the microphone, your name and address?
I saw a few pictures.
That would be terrific. Mr. Longstaff, you did go over the change of the appeal with the appellant?
Yes, just to clarify, originally, when the Flahertys came in with their request and their project, I was looking at it as an expansion of a non-conforming use in the R2 zone, which would have, could have been handled as a miscellaneous appeal. Expansions, conversions, you know, all of those things to a non-conforming use. But in closer review, we realized that it's not actually a non-conforming use, it's a use that can be allowed by special exception, although it's been, that use has occurred on that lot for many decades, long before the zoning ordinance was in, so it's never had to have the special exception approval, it's been a grandfathered use. However, in expanding the structure and adding this new proposed use, that does fall under commercial ag, it's now time to upgrade and trigger that and take it and give it that special exception review-
Okay.
-and approval. They could continue doing the current activities, the commercial current, the current commercial agricultural activities as they are indefinitely, but with this new use, it's sort of time to bring it all up to speed and up to standard. And so I actually gave them the wrong application, although in the miscellaneous appeal, they needed to address the special exception criteria. So that's all been done. It is just a different, it's kind of a name change and a little bit different standard. So rather than saying it's to expand an existing non-conforming use, it's to actually conduct a use that is permitted by special exception.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate the clarification.
I'm hoping that's clear as mud.
Yeah, that helps, that helps a lot.
All right. Hi, guys. I'm Cindy Flaherty, I have worked and grown up on Flaherty's farm my whole life, and before I explain, I guess I'll start with the pictures. This is our property on 128 Payne Road, it's owned by James Flaherty, he's my dad. And the first picture in the four pictures you guys have is of the property that was taken today, as well as the second picture, which shows the parking area out front of that property on 128 Payne Road. And then the second two pictures are of it from my wedding, so that's kind of what it looks like when it's all dressed up. So basically, we had my wedding last year on the farm, and we had a bunch of people stop in and ask if we do that, so that's how we even realized that there was kind of a demand for this barn events type thing. We would like to use our property, an existing barn located on 128 Payne Road, to host special events such as weddings, birthday parties, and reunions. We would be adding a small addition to the barn, a 10 by 48 shed row on the backside that would mirror the front, so when your picture probably shows best on the picture, the second picture, and you can kind of see that shed row that comes off the front will be mirrored on the back, so it'll be a symmetrical barn, as long as all goes as planned. And in this addition, we'll be adding handicap accessible restrooms, which is, we already have an approved septic design, and we are here today to get the approval from all of you to do this. It is my understanding that this use is allowed as a special exception on our R2-zoned land. We have adequate parking on site and plenty of land to host these events.
Mr. Longstaff, is the special, the handicap part of that, trip anything additional?
Excuse me?
Does the handicap part of that, with the handicap accessible stuff, does that trip anything additional?
No, no, it would probably come under the fire marshal's permit for barrier free. Depending, it's triggered by size and cost, generally.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I should add, we've already met with someone here on the fire marshals, and once this passes through, we'll be working with them to continue following through with our planning process.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments, Mr. Longstaff?
No, none other than what I've explained already about the different type of appeal that we've changed this to.
Okay. Comments, questions from the board? Mr. Marcisso?
Was it R, it's R2 now?
It is, yeah.
Was it R, rural farm at one time?
As far as I know, it's always been R2.
Oh.
Okay. I just wanted to take a quick look at your sketches here. So you are, I just want to clarify, you are not proposing to expand the uses beyond what you already currently are doing, you just want to provide the space for bathrooms and for changing?
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we have some standards that we will need to go through, and I'd like each of the board members to comment on each of these standards, and we'll take a vote individually on them. I do need to tell you that the special exception is a very hard exception to actually for us to approve, but we'll go through them when we come up. I'd like you to please first comment on each of these before the board discusses them, okay? The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reasonable sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of the design of operation.
We already have an approved septic system that can be installed that meets all the standards as far as septic systems go.
Okay. Let's start on down with Mr. Loizell, would you, I mean, Mr. Crockett, would you begin comments on that and give any input that you might have, or questions?
No, the fact that they're already looking at the septic and have an approved system in place is-
Okay.
Good.
Mr. Stanhope?
And that's been town-approved already, the septic system?
We haven't, we don't approve it until it's issued to us as a permit application. The design, though, is for a reception area with 90 seats, so they've, the design is adequate, we would have no problem with this design once the applicant comes with their total project application.
Thank you.
I'm in favor with the proposal.
I see no problem with that number, okay?
Okay. And I, as well, I don't see where it's going to make any effects there. I'd like to call for a vote, those in favor of A. All approve. Second question is, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity.
We have plenty of parking, and we have quite a large entrance off the road, and tons of road frontage if we needed to add additional entrances.
Okay. Do you foresee any additional parking, any additional traffic above what you currently are doing, or very much?
I don't think so. I mean, we have a ton of traffic already at the farm stand on those busy, like Memorial Day and stuff, I can't see it being too much busier than that, so.
Okay. I guess I'd like to back up one little shot, too. What precipitated you deciding that you needed to have this additional section of the building on there?
Basically, we wanted to add bathrooms, and I think the barn would look nicer if it was more symmetrical looking in general, so that was basically our reasoning. I mean, if it all came down to, I guess we didn't need to add the addition, but I think it would look the best.
Okay. And basically for facilities for changing and stuff, for the weddings and whatnot.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, for the board, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity.
I have a question.
Sure.
When you plan to host these types of events, they're typically would be more or less off-hours of your standard traffic flow, more or less, wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, probably.
On a weekend, or, you know, special time, so I don't see any additional traffic concerns in my regard.
Terrific. Mr. Stanhope?
I agree also, it probably won't be maybe two or three times a month anyways, on weekends or something, so I agree with that as well.
Mr. Crockett?
I have some, I don't know if it's reservations, but I mean, I know the traffic pattern down there seems to be getting busier and busier, so, I mean, I don't know if that's going to create something or not, I don't know if we, if there's any other study or anything like that, or if there's anything needed for a traffic pattern, especially with the change of the Dunston Corner intersection a little ways down, but I know that road's been getting much busier, I'm thinking we're adding potentially 90 cars for an event?
Well, it's 90 seats, there's-
90 seats, okay.
I doubt very much it'd be 90 cars.
So probably about 40 or 50, maybe.
It would, it would co, I'm sorry, if you want me to answer that, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to speak out of hand.
Yes, please, of course.
I'm kind of bypassing you here.
No, that'd be great.
I think the way it would function is you would have, you would see an influx of traffic in bunches during the event. I doubt very much you'd probably see two events in one day, but you might occasionally-
No, definitely not.
So probably one event in one day, so whatever, you know, three or four hour period that event was happening, that's when that traffic impact would happen. I would go on to say that I'm pretty sure that the activity, if the board were to approve it and they went forward with the project, they'd still have to go before the planning board for site plan review and approval, and I believe at that time, traffic would be addressed as far as how many vehicle trips additional per day that this activity would generate. So the planning board would use the design, the site design criteria that they normally would on any site plan review, I think, to look at that impact. I just offer that up as sort of a safety net for you folks, should you have concerns about that, if you wish to put any emphasis on that for the planning board to look at in their review, you could certainly do that.
Now, is there a designated, do you have anything per se right now for a designated entrance and exit?
We do, yeah, right now, right now, there is one entrance that goes in, and we've talked about putting in an additional entrance right across from the farm stand itself, but we haven't finalized that, I guess it will just depend on what we need to do and what you guys see fit to make traffic flow the best.
If I'm understanding, we're not going to have the final say on traffic anyways.
No.
It's going to be the planning board that's going to address that. But I do, I do have some concerns with that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's definitely an area that's been getting busier.
Okay.
I mean, I probably have some reservations on that, that would be my own personal opinion.
Mr. Marcisso?
I think that should be passed on to the planning board to answer the vehicular traffic and the pedestrian, I'm sure there's no sidewalks down there, is there?
No, but they wouldn't be on, it's all on one property, so.
This on B says all pedestrian traffic conditions, so I think the planning board will, I'm okay with it.
I actually don't have any issues with it at all, mainly based on the fact that you said you don't expect a great deal of additional traffic above what you already currently have.
Exactly.
So if you're handling the traffic now and it's not an issue, I don't foresee it being a real issue.
Yeah, and also, chances are the farm stand will be probably, it'll probably be after hours of the farm stand, and I mean, there's quite often 40 cars at the farm stand at once, so it's not like it's a huge difference.
Right.
Do they use that side of the road for parking?
No.
Where the barn is?
No.
Okay.
No, it's two separate things, but all in the same vicinity.
And I'm assuming you would probably be strongly encouraging people not to park over the farm and walk because that would be a huge-
No, there's plenty of space, yeah, I had like 200 people at my wedding, and there was plenty of space on our side of the road for all that traffic, so I included a picture in there of the parking area, it's pretty large, so.
So you'll probably have that designated out if you have any events, there's no parking in that area?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Can we have a vote on C, those in favor? Those opposed?
I'm sorry, approve.
Oh, approve, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Crockett?
I'm in favor, as long as we can send something on to the planning board-
Okay.
-to definitely research this and do some more details on it.
So everyone is, okay.
Okay, D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on the water supplies?
Basically, I have, this property and building are not in a highly populated or residential area anyways, and we're going to be staying away from the water supplies, so I don't know what else to add to that.
Okay. Ward?
I don't, I don't see any problem with it.
Same here.
Yeah.
Mr. Crockett would agree with that. Mr. Marcisso?
I think it would have a lot less effect than when the tiles were in there.
Exactly, yeah.
And I, I agree, I'm all set with that. Vote on that, those in favor? Yeah, all in favor. And F, located in a shoreline zone, this is not, is it?
No.
Okay, so F does not apply. J, the applicant has sufficient right, title interest in the site of the proposal, proposed to be able to carry out the proposed use?
Yes.
Number H, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 5 of this section.
Yes.
And I, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation.
Again, this property and building are not in a highly populated residential area, and the surrounding neighbors are basically ourselves and family, so.
Okay. Members of the board?
I don't really know what else to add to that.
I would agree with that, I think the amount of noise would be minimal in a very short timeframe.
Okay. Mr. Stanhope?
Agreed as well.
Are you planning on having any, like, bigger bands or anything like that at the facility, or is it just?
No, just probably a standard DJ, and I believe, I don't know about the town ordinance on noise and stuff, but we'll definitely be following all of that if there's a cutoff time or whatever.
Okay. Mr. Marcisso?
I have no problem.
I just, I just got a question or two, how late would you anticipate would be the latest that you would have an event?
I would say 10 o'clock or so at night would be probably the latest, but again, we could obviously change that if there's an issue with that and make it earlier in the night, or-
Mr. Longstaff, is there a, are there any kind of guidelines on this within the city? I don't believe that I'm aware of.
There is a noise ordinance, but that's-
Just in general?
That's enforced by the police department.
Okay, all right.
And I think it does go to the hour, I think, I can't remember the starting hour, I want to say 7 o'clock, 10 o'clock, who leave?
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me, but there is a noise ordinance.
Either 10 or 11 o'clock, it might vary on the weekend by an hour, but-
Okay, okay, so you'll be within the, within the town ordinances and you'll check those?
Yep.
Okay. So a up or down vote on that, the yeses?
Yes.
Were you right?
That was all.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll need an overall vote from the board, those in favor?
I have this question.
Mr. Marcisso?
You keep talking about your wedding and all that, is this specifically limited to weddings, or?
No, no, it would be open to any special events, reunions, birthday parties, what have you, yep.
Okay. To open this to public comment, anyone care to speak to this? Nobody from the public, we're closed, couple of comments, and final vote from the board.
I received, I received no written comments.
No written comments, okay, no letters?
One other quick question, Mr. Chair, Mr. Marcisso brought it up, what other events do you think you'd be looking to have there other than weddings?
Probably like birthday parties or reunions, things like that.
Because reunions, you could get into people, you could get into hundreds.
Well, probably not reunions, but like birthday parties and other small functions.
Will this go to like the planning board for further?
Yes, yes.
Direction to the applicant?
I think so, yes.
So we're just doing the special exception for a non-conforming use to be more non-conforming?
It's not an, it's, no, again, I'll try to explain one more time, it's not a non-conforming use.
Okay.
It's a grandfathered use that is allowed by special exception. Since it's grandfathered, they've already been doing it, but now they're changing or modifying that, and it's time to go back and get that special exception approval. So you're approving a use that can only be done by special exception from the board of people.
Okay, that cleared it up.
A use that they've been already doing, but-
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve Appeal 2532 as presented.
Okay. Have a vote on that? Yeses? Okay, you're approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Your life.
You will, you will be required to begin any construction within six months. Here you go.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for bringing these in.
Yeah.
I can't, thanks, good job.
Yes, right now?
Yeah.
Or?
Let's pass that for signature.
Okay. That's under one of these, right?
Mr. Chair, did we need to keep those pictures that were given to us for public record, or no?
Or one set?
Or at least one set?
Yeah, I think we probably-
I guess not.
Did she leave one set?
Nope.
No, I don't think we probably need them.
Okay, that one's not coming, this one.
So let me, let me get something clear, because they're building the bathrooms is the reason they got to go down to the planning board?
Yeah.
Because if they weren't building the bathrooms, there would be no need for a site-
Right.
-plan review-
Right.
-traffic or anything else, because they've already had them, they already do it there.
It's that and the added activity of hosting events at the barn.
So that triggers-
That triggers the need for the special exception.
Not blocking, planning board.
I just passed it down, or-
Oh, for the planning board?
Brian took it down there, yep.
Yeah, because it's a modification.
Like, what, what?
Something so easy, so confusing.
This is a variance appeal. Oh, variance appeal by Kenneth and Lisa Lynch, and they were, of 20 Vesper Street, they want to construct a mudroom six feet from the side property line, and orient the front steps 4.8 feet from the front property line in an R4 zone. And the R4 zone requires a 15-foot side setback and a 30-foot front setback, so they're asking for a nine-foot variance and a 25-foot respectively. Mr. Fisher, please state your name and your representation.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions, here this evening representing Kenneth and Lisa Lynch, who are, Kenneth Lynch is on business travel, so he wasn't able to be here, but as Jim has read out to you, we are looking for a hardship variance, which I'll explain the reason for it in just a moment, regarding the proposed construction of a very small mudroom at the back of the structure. Before I begin, I just wanted to state really quickly that it's been my pleasure to be here for almost 22 years to present projects before this board, and I can't remember a time when I haven't had an actual presentation copy to be able to present and refer to when we're going through things. But we had just a slight issue a couple of days ago, and what was our office is no longer, and toward that end, the presentation copy that looked pretty cool, actually, is not now so much. So, in any case, by the time we're next here, or next before you, everything will be back to normal, and we'll be rocking and rolling and doing what we normally do. So I apologize for not having a presentation copy for you, but if you would, please refer to the plan at the back of your packet, that is what I would have presented, albeit in larger format, and that does have all the information that you may, graphic information that you may need to be able to see, and I will be referring to that here over the course of the next few minutes. Essentially, what we're looking at is another property at Higgins Beach that is relatively small, and the cottage on which we're placed on the lot is also relatively small. The point being is that it was constructed, I believe, back in 1940, as many of these structures were from 100-plus years ago up to relatively recently, but this is an original structure, and you can see that on that plan at the back of your packet, that the situation of the house is well outside of the zoning envelope that was created well after the fact from 1940. In fact, the eve of the existing house is about three inches from the property line, so we're certainly not increasing any non-conformity, but essentially, what happens is, the Lynch's have owned this property for about 12 years, they are now in the process of downsizing, they also live in Scarborough, so when they're downsizing, and they intend to be able to create this as their principal home. As such, because it's more of a seasonal cottage as the way it was originally created, they would like to be able to make it a four-season home, and toward that end, it's not really conducive, given its relatively small size, the principal entrance or the primary entrance that they use, being off the deck in the back, it's not really conducive to walking into the kitchen area, they would like to be able to basically have the mudroom, because as right now, you can imagine being on the beach, and especially year-round now, tracking snow and sand and the tritus in from the back deck, they would simply like to be able to have a very small mudroom in that area, and the dimensions of which would be six by, almost six by seven, it's actually six by 6.9, with a one-foot eve that would correspond to the eves on the rest of the house. The reason we're here for a hardship, this is a fairly simple process as far as the size of the proposed mudroom, but the reason we're here is a hardship variance is that even though we are not in the shoreline zone, which usually precipitates a hardship variance, a portion of the property is located in the flood zone, so we're here this evening asking for a hardship variance, because that is a requirement, anything in a portion of a property that's in a flood zone does require that. In this particular case, you'll note, although it's kind of challenging to see on the actual plan before you, that the entirety of the house actually is not in a flood zone, it's just a portion of the property. Nonetheless, the statute requires hardship variance for any portion of a property that might be designated as in a flood zone, and the flood zone in this case is off to the southerly side or the left-hand side as you're oriented on this plan. So normally, were it not for the fact that a portion of the properties in the flood zone, we'd be here asking for a practical difficulty, because again, we wouldn't meet the, based on the current situation of the house or location of the house, we wouldn't be able to fit anything, or this mudroom, in the building envelope. And the reason for that, and you'll see some photographs that are attached in your packet as well, is that the mudroom is exactly centered on the existing door, the entrance accessway in the back of the house. There is a, there was a question, Brian had a question about very logically, well, can the door just be slid over a little bit? And it can't for a myriad number of reasons. First of all, there is a, there's a support wall that runs down, right down the middle of the house, and there's a carve-out of that support wall where there's a little anteroom, which is where the door is. And on either side of that door, on one side is the bathroom, again, this is a very small cottage, and on the other side is a little alcove, which is plumbed for the washer and dryer unit. So really, the door is where it is- So really, the door is where it is, and the door itself can't really be moved. On the other side of that washer and dryer unit is the bedroom, and that everything is rather small. So toward this end, the Lynch's did take a look at that, they've engaged a building designer and a contractor to take a look at it, and the contractor said, given the location of the kitchen and then the plumbing for the washer dryer unit, that the door really has to stay where it is. And toward that end, giving a mudroom, because it's an accessory to the existing door, we really need to have it where it is. Point being there is that you can see the building envelope, which is a dashed dotted line on this plan, it's just outside of that envelope. Nothing as far as the deck or the rest of the house is gonna change, notwithstanding the stairway in the front that I'll get to in just a moment. So it's literally just building out a bit on the mudroom from the accessway. It's going to be six feet, including the eve, or the proposal is to have it be six feet, from the side setback. Again, the actual house itself is only three, or the eve of the house itself is only three inches from that side setback. So there's certainly no greater non-conformity that we're looking at toward that end. And then the property to the north is wooded, so that there's not likely to be any impact, visual impact or anything that way. Yes, somebody's property, they could certainly take down the woods, but again, it's only a six-by-seven foot room, six-by-six point nine foot room, and the logical mudroom being what it is, that's, that's the request that we have before you this evening. The other portion of this request is something that we had suggested to them that they can do as far as reducing a non-conformity on the existing property, and that is, the front stair, right now, is oriented directly toward the right-of-way, toward the street. And it's also not one of these types of stairs that's particularly conducive to using it. First of all, that's a little porch room right up front, and it's the kind of thing that just does not bode well for the main entrance. And also, what happens is when people come out that stair, they tend to just, there's no sidewalk or anything that leads out to the road, it's just down to the grass, and they tend to fly out the stair and, you know, toward the street. So what we suggested is, also, this is a, an outward swinging door, obviously, and there's no landing. So the door opens and the step is right there. So if you're coming up the step trying to open the door, you actually have to back down the steps to let the door open before you can come back up again. So what we suggested is that they turn the, they create a small landing, so the door can open while people are actually standing on the landing, turning this step ninety degrees, so it's actually facing toward the driveway, so it reduces the front setback non-conformity, not by much, but by a foot, and in orients, from a safety perspective, pedestrian traffic toward the driveway, as opposed to toward the street. Doesn't have to be done this way, but it tends to be pretty logical that way, and it's, we like to be able to reduce non-conformities when we can. And toward this end, they agreed with that readily. So there's basically two parts to this, that first part being the mudroom, and the second part being the relocation or the reorientation of the stairs. With that, I'd be happy to go through the, uh,
Mr. Longstaff, other than the comments that you had provided us with, anything else you'd like to add to that? Questions from the board? Got one question, Mr. Fisher. The front steps, the reorientation of the front steps, are you going to keep those the same size? Are you proposing to keep them the same size, or are they gonna be expanded, or when you turn them?
Uh, the, the width of them will be the exact same size. They will be, the overall structure itself will be slightly longer, because we're gonna be adding a four-by-four landing to it. Right now, there isn't one, it just, it literally comes out on a four-foot wide stairs, it just goes right down about four and a half feet down to the grade. And so in this case, by reorienting this ninety degrees, we'll have that little landing, that four-by-four landing, and then the steps will come off of that.
So the, um, so the orientation of those will be facing to the left?
That's correct, as you're looking at that picture, right where the bush is.
Okay. And in the rear, I see that the proposed addition is considerably shorter, considerably less distance out than the, than the overall deck. How much further is it than the current landing that goes into that?
You mean how much further, what's the proposed mudroom relative to the deck itself?
Right, no, not from the deck itself, from the current landing that goes into that door.
Well, it's gonna be built on the level of the deck. You can see right now that there's actually a, I'm not sure if this is answering your question, but when you refer to the plan, you'll see that the, the area of the, kind of the small abutment of the deck, there's the main deck area, and then you've got that small abutment that heads over toward the north, that's where the proposed mudroom is, so it's gonna go about a foot and a half further back, which, from where that little L-shaped portion of the deck is.
That was my question.
Okay, great.
Okay. Still considerably less than the, than the full width of the deck?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any additional questions from the board? Letters from the public?
I received no public comment.
No public letters? Like to open it up for a public comment? You care to comment on this? Closed for public comment? We will go through the standards for variance appeal. Mr. Fisher, I'd like you to answer these, if you would please, and then I'll ask the board to follow up.
Certainly.
If the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted.
Does it please the board, I'd like to just be able to read this answer, if you have the information before you? With most of the dwellings in the Higgins Beach area having been or being converted to year-round homes from seasonal cottages, a reasonable return for properties in the area cannot really be realized without a variance granted to make the house more conforming to the standards of houses that are already in that area and that they enjoy. As you know, I've been before you, as well as many other people, quite often regarding remodeling and reconstruction of the houses in that area. And quite a number of houses are being significantly enlarged, so be it. This one is not being enlarged, it's just simply the mudroom, and so the character of that, which, I'll get into that in just a moment, is such that it's actually gonna be enhancing the overall house. So a summer cottage that was not constructed with the intent of year-round living, while neighboring cottages have already been expanded to conform to overall neighborhood conditions, this variance is required to also yield reasonable return relative to many of the other properties that are in that exact same vicinity.
Is there a great deal of additional work going on besides just these two variance, these appeals?
To the house itself?
Yes.
Not particularly, they're going to be winterizing it with some insulation, or so we're told, by the contractor, because the Lynch's would like to be able to move in here relatively soon, as, again, downsizing as they are, as their permanent residents. So they, the answer to your question is, I don't know the extent of the remodeling in the inside, but there would be nothing further on the outside of the house. No enlargements to the deck at this time, et cetera. And there's just gonna be a little bit of information that's gonna be completed, or a little bit of construction that's gonna be completed internally.
Okay. Comments from the board, questions? Okay. Motion on number one, well, actually, number one lets you see a show of hands, yes or no? Those, those in favor? That was the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless variance is granted.
State that again, please.
The landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. Questions are certainly welcome.
I'm finding it hard on that one. Reasonable return.
Okay.
I would concur.
Mr. Sissil?
I think the, uh, what they're asking for is so small, the reason return, the reason return is there. So, they didn't do it, the return is gonna probably be very small for them if they did go ahead with these repairs.
I, I think for me, the reasonable return is to be able to use your property in a significantly same manner as the other neighbors. And it appears to me that without these improvements, the appellants won't be able to use that property, and certainly not as a year-round property in a reasonable manner. I'm not looking at the financial side of this, I'm looking more at a return of use of the property myself.
I always look at the financial, you know? But I understand exactly what you're saying.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Just comment on that very quickly. You're right, I mean, let's call it what it is, can the house be occupied without this? Sure. From a reasonable return standpoint, we all know that there's quite a number of houses that are being redone in that area. This is, as Martin had mentioned, a very, very small addition. Does it have to be there? No. But is it conducive to promulgating the existence of the house as a year-round residence? It would be very challenging for us, if we were in a similar situation, to, particularly in adverse weather conditions, rain and snow and what have you, literally open the door, the principal door to the structure, and walk in with everything just kind of dripping literally on the kitchen floor. The only reason for this, and again, it's only a six-by-six point nine little structure as a mudroom, is to literally just take off the coats and take off the boots and wipe your feet before you actually walk into the kitchen. Is that, is not having that produce a reasonable return? Given the houses that are being redone down in that area, some of which are quite magnanimously larger than this one, it's, the smaller cottages that are there are really lessening their return relative to the other properties that are in that area. And this is, again, is a very small addition, and I would just suggest it to kind of keep up with the times, as it were, a reasonable return would indeed be effective by approving this. Thank you.
I would say, with the additional clarified information from myself, I would be in agreement with that. They're making a small return with the front steps and making it safer as well. I think they've taken due diligence in trying to, as accommodating as possible for this. Said, keeping up with some of the times.
I also think that if they were not, if they were just wanting to add this, just so they had it, it would be a little bit different. It says they're adding the insulation and probably windows and stuff, so that they can enjoy this property year-round. I think that's, that's what I'm, that's kind of what I consider as reasonable, reasonable return on the property. Any additional questions from?
No, I still have a struggle with it, because it can yield a reasonable return, and we're not basically looking on it based upon the other properties in the area, we're looking at the specific property, as to whether or not this specific property can yield a reasonable return without this, and we have to look at it based upon the guidelines. And that's, that's what I'm struggling with, because it can. I mean, we do have another entrance in, and I don't know what that leads to or anything, but, I mean, there is a porch area by the looks of it there as well, where something could potentially be set up if they were coming in.
I understand, I think the essence is on the term reasonable, as it often is, and it's certainly subjective. And, you know, with the will of the board is certainly what we'll adhere to. I just think that, again, arguing for our client certainly, is what's really that definition of reasonable? If it's purely financial, because all they want to do is make a bigger house to rent it out in the summertime, I wouldn't be here. There are many projects that we were asked to bring before the board that we just demure from, basically. And those that we feel are reasonable, no pun intended, I think is an easier way to do it. Certainly respect your opinion, but again, if we're looking at a definition of reasonable relative to what's there now, not just this site, but the overall site, and you're right, we're looking at this particular site, not necessarily the entire vicinity based on this question. But if it's not purely financial, which we typically haven't looked at that in the past, then I think reasonable is a, the definition of reasonable is a lot easier to look at in a situation like this. Again, they're not looking to expand the house by thirty percent or whatever toward the back, it's just a very, very small room. Understand your misgivings, but I think that, you know, reasonable in this case may very well be reasonable.
Okay, let's have a vote on that, on number, on A, those in favor? Those opposed? Reap.
No, we're, we're voting or opinionating on both projects. The back mudroom?
Correct.
And front stairs?
Correct.
You know, you're just talking about that back room, and I can understand completely there. But now you're going out front, and you're asking to change something that's been there, and it looks like the people across the street, have they, do they have stairs going into the front like theirs? It doesn't look like anybody uses the front.
That's pretty much true.
There's no, so, I mean, you're asking us, I don't want to get lost in the fog of just one thing, or vote for the back part, and lose insight of they're asking for the front part, too.
Understand, but we can certainly vote on those separately, if we, and we can make that as a condition. I guess, however, I'd like to point out to Mr. Sissil that by turning those stairs, it will make it less non-conforming, because it will take up less, it'll be further from the street.
It doesn't look, doesn't appear that way to me.
It would be, right now, it's about three feet from the, uh,
From the building?
From the front, from the front right-of-way line. And we're gonna make, we're gonna add an extra foot to that, so it's actually gonna be one foot less non-conforming. It's gonna be one foot further away from the right-of-way.
But you're adding a whole stair up to that?
No, the stair's already there.
Are you, I'm confused now, what are you, what are you gonna do? You're gonna turn the stairs?
Yep, it's just gonna be turned ninety degrees.
So you're adding stairs up to a landing?
No, the stairs are already there. What we're gonna be doing is just kind of shifting the stairs, and then there'll be a landing at the top of the stairs, it's just four-by-four, so the door can actually open out onto a landing, as opposed to opening out on the stair itself.
So you have, now you have a landing plus the stairs?
Yeah.
Which is an addition.
It's no closer to the right-of-way, and it-
I know that, I know. Well, so we're going on two things there.
We can certainly, we can certainly break that out, and if we need to make that as a condition, if, if the board decides that that's what they want to do, we can certainly do that. So I guess let's, uh, let's vote first on the, on the back of the house, on the addition on the back. So those in favor?
Can, before we do that, Mr. Longstaff, can we break that out?
Be conditional, then with it?
I just want to make sure if we're voting on this, that we can actually amend this.
We can make any conditions on the?
I believe, I believe that you, you could, with conditions, approve the front steps, if that was the wish of the board, the desire of the board, but not permit the back.
Or the opposite.
Or the opposite, whichever, whichever, I mean, it is kind of a hybrid request, because you're dealing with the back and the front, which is not usually the case. It's usually a project in one area of the house or the other. But I, I do think you have some leeway to approve one phase of that request, and not the other. It would have to be worded that way in your decision made clear.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll take a vote on just the back section only on this. Those in favor?
I'm more inclined to think, to agree with the return of being able to use the house with a mudroom in the back. So, in that case, and eliminate, not voting on that front part, but just on that back part, for the reasonable return, having a mudroom makes sense to me. Leaving the financial part out.
Those opposed? Mr. Dillon, Mr. Sissil, Mr. Stark, those in favor? Okay. And let's take a similar vote on the front stairs, on the turning of the front stairs. Those in favor?
See, I would be more in approval of the front stairs, because it's coming more from a safety perspective, and it's becoming more inconformant, so I would agree with that, I wouldn't agree with that.
Okay. So, Mr. Crockett, Mr. Stanhope?
Dillon. Yep.
And Mr. Stark.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Question B, that the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood?
That is correct, the circumstances of the property are such that the existing cottage was originally constructed toward one side of the lot during an era, nineteen forty, that predated zoning. Therefore, any expansion is due to the location on the lot, not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. Also, this hardship variance is only required because a portion of the property is in a flood zone, though none of the house, nor any portion of the proposed location of the mudroom, is in a flood hazard zone. The steps would not be in a flood hazard area either. Again, this creates a situation that is unique to this property, not to the overall conditions of the neighborhood.
Questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Stanhope?
Yes, I agree that it's, it's the property versus the general conditions of the neighborhood.
Okay, Mr. Crockett?
I would agree.
I agree, that flood zone really does make it unique.
And I would certainly agree as well, so.
Those in favor? C, that the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality?
That also is correct, neighborhood character will not negative, be negatively affected, primarily because this small mudroom, the rear of the existing house, where virtually no one will see it, primarily also because there's a wooded area next door. Yes, that wood area couldn't come down, but it hasn't ever, so it's not likely that really anybody is gonna see it other than perhaps the abutment to the rear, but there are also sheltered landscapes- to the rear, but they're also sheltered landscape-wise, so it's highly unlikely that it's really going to change any structural aesthetic of that area. Also, by enhancing the cottage with a mudroom, the addition will actually enhance the essential character by bringing the house into a greater conformity with many of the neighboring houses.
Okay. Members of the board?
I would agree.
I agree.
Mr. Sisso?
I agree, but I've got to make a statement. Remember, we had this next lot, this is a double lot?
Yes.
And he was here to ask why he couldn't, couldn't split it. So maybe one day, that will be split to make it more uniform.
This lot is not.
I agree with, with.
This, I don't believe that this lot's large enough to split. That, that was a double lot that they split before, and there's no way they can split this lot. It'd be too non-conforming to build on.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Today.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. But I agree. No, I'm, I'm in favor of it. Just wanted to make that.
No, I, I certainly understand what you're saying there. Okay, so those in favor? All in favor? And that the.
Can I make just a quick comment on that?
Certainly.
Thank you. I agree with the vote. Thank you very much. You'll note that in any, if I or anybody else from either my company or any company comes before you, as far as double lots are concerned, this isn't germane to this particular project, but you'll note that many of, in fact, most of the lots in that area are slightly tropezoidal, as opposed to, excuse me, parallelograms as opposed to an actual rectangle. And whenever you start, and you're absolutely correct in the fact that the, the overall square footage of most of these 50-by-100 lots is based on the premise that they would be 90 degrees. Under such a consideration, there may be a possibility, I'll leave that to Brian, but there may be a possibility of further splitting. But as soon as you take that and you start angling these lots, you start, I mean, you kind of get the idea where the angle goes more and more acute, you start losing square footage. It's still 50 by 100, but the angle actually does not give you what a 90-degree angle would. So many of the double lots that are in the Higgins Beach area that look like, if somebody says, "Oh, great, I can split this lot," it doesn't often work that way, if they're dual 50-by-hundreds. So many of the lots that look like they could be split can't be. Just wanted to.
They'd come see us, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Well, he tried. He did come see us. We're going to next vote.
All right. Here we go. The hardship is not the result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
That's correct. The hardship is directly the result of a zoning setback requirement that was created long after the house was originally constructed. It is not at all the result of any action taken by the homeowner or any previous homeowner.
Board members?
I agree with that.
Agree.
I would agree.
I agree.
And I agree as well. For a vote on that one? All in favor? And, Mr. Fisher, since we did have a vote of three to two on that first question, it did pass. So we'll have an overall vote. Like a, like an overall vote from the board? Those in favor? That's three, four. Mr. Sisso, Mr. Dillon, myself.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Just to be clear for the record.
Yes.
Are you, are you approving the project as proposed, or are you splitting it into a front project and a back?
We are.
I believe they both passed anyways.
Did you vote in favor of the.
As presented, I would imagine, yeah. I'm voting for the whole project.
Okay. All right, then it is not split.
Do you need the no votes too, Mr. Chair?
What's that?
Do you need the no votes too?
Yes.
Were there any of the individual items that did not pass?
No.
No.
So it was a positive vote on each of the criteria?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Clearly, three-two vote on one of them, and it was, but it wasn't happening. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you very much.
Any other business that the board would like to bring up?
I'd also like to thank Karen for joining us.
Thank you.
Great to have you.
I, I will say something from Mr. Fisher's perspective and others, knowing that some businesses were a little bit displaced from the recent events. Our office is across the street. We have a meeting room available for businesses that are looking to utilize some space for that that we would offer up.
The Chamber of Commerce and Seiko Office.
Yeah. So we're right across the street from you, behind Lois's marketplace.
That's right. Seventeen of us.
Yes.
Any business that's experiencing hardship, come see us.
That means a lot.
Mr. Chairman, just a note, I'm not sure if this will happen next meeting or not, but Town Planner Dan Bacon will probably want to come and talk to the board and get your input on some potential changes to the beach communities, Pine Point and Higgins, as far as setbacks, setback changes and things of that nature, to try to reduce the number of variance appeals needed.
But I do.
So I just wanted to bring that up. I'll, I'll be informing the board of the exact timing of that. He'll, he'll tie it in with a meeting, a regular meeting, either as a workshop prior to the meeting, or depending on the, the agenda for any given meeting, we might be able to fit it in that way. But we're, we're trying to work toward that end, and I was going to mention, should the vote have gone to the negative on the last appeal, that that could be an option for that homeowner, depending on what those changes ended up being at Higgins Beach. They could perhaps then go for a limited reduction of yard size and still meet it because it might be a five-foot reduction on a shorter setback. So they're, they're, we're trying to work towards some reasonable compromises that would not, would allow people to, to do the things that they're asking to do under a variance without having to actually go to the.